I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all bow your heads just for a moment, this is a something especially needs done today. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing upon the crowd here today. Please give us the strength, the wisdom and the guidance to do the right thing for our community, for all of our citizens, for all of our workers and the future of our beloved county. We thank you for the opportunity to serve you. We thank you for the opportunity to be a part of these discussions. Do what's right to create a better lifestyle for each and every one of our citizens and move forward together as a community. We ask this in God's name, amen. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here. Okay, this is a special public meeting to discuss the impending bankruptcy and closing potential of Stuart Healthcare. There's been a lot of discussion throughout the community of what we can do, what's being done, if there's anything that could be done. There are over 800 jobs, five facilities at risk. There's a tax base, there's property tax, there's income tax, and there's just the general welfare and good being of our county that's at stake here with these discussions. So it's been brought to our request by a nonprofit group and by Delta Healthcare that we as commissioners get involved. So I think we owe it as public servants to turn over every rock, shake every tree and do anything we can to protect and preserve the integrity of our community, the integrity of our healthcare and the well-being of our citizens that work at these facilities. This occurrence that's happening was of no fault at all because of the workers, because of the patients, because of the city, because of the county, because of anything we, our community, have done. This is malfeasance, misfeasance and greed on the part of a CEO of a company that took all of our profits out of our community for his own personal benefit and caused us to be in the situation that we're in that is now putting the livelihood of many, many of our citizens at risk because of his greed and actions. This ended up in bankruptcy court. The people of Stuart, the good local people of Stuart have been working with us in every way, shape possible and an outpouring of community support like I've never seen before. Came together yesterday, although it is the 11th hour, it's fourth and long. There are some options that are on the table that we need to explore as a community. And, and us as commissioners have been asked to help. I initially reached out as president of the board, our prosecutor to see initially, put the feelers on on what we can and can't do, but it requires a bigger discussion with my full board of commissioners, the prosecutor, the auditor, and as you can see, every elected official that works downtown here is here with us today because they all care. We're all a part of this. We're all in this boat together with our citizens. So with that, we're going to start the meeting with a, I guess the first thing to do would be.
Follow the agenda.
I'm following the agenda. That would be to get into discussion on the situation. The first thing of the discussion that we have is I was initially brought into this about six months ago. I should say a year ago, I had a meeting with the CEO of Stuart and, and our mental health director. And just a heads up that, hey, some of our psychiatrists haven't been paid. Some of our doctors at the hospital haven't been getting paid on time. And there was up to a six-month lapse where they were not paid. That kind of was the first little warning sign that I received. Shortly after that, I got a call that a dialysis company came to repo some of their machines. And they had patients there that needed, needed help. So at that time, I had reached out to the governor's office, I'd reached out to, to our federal and state legislators to see is there anything we can do? With a little bit of assistance, they were able to replace that dialysis company with another dialysis company and continue marching on. But there were warning signs all along the way that was brought up to our attention that there were supplies that weren't there for the nurses, that things were starting to fall apart, they, they were being neglected. This opened up a bigger picture then with Stuart's national bankruptcy filing. And, and as we assembled again, a group of community leaders led by some people in this room, gathered and assembled at Trumbull Country Club to talk about, hey, here's what's going on and we need to do something about this. And, and that's when groups first started saying, hey, this is, this is bad, this is real. This is our hospital, this is our community. These outsiders came in and destroyed a good thing, what can we do to get control again or to save the jobs of these people? So it's been an ongoing discussion for about six months, back and forth. It ended up going to bankruptcy auction where there were no qualified bidders for it, but there was always interest from other groups and the hospital was always still for sale per se. And, and many of our community leaders reached out to other care providers, other hospitals to say, hey, do you have an interest in buying what we have here? Do you have an interest in partnering with our community to provide coverage for our citizens? As that went on, so there are some tire kickers again. And finally, a local group of distinguished businessmen in our community formed a nonprofit and said, we can do this. They, they recruited the assistance of a national broker, Delta Healthcare, who agreed to come in and help and broker a deal between our local community and the bankruptcy court to potentially sell the hospital assets to this local community. They put a plan together and the plan is to run it locally, run locally managed, get it rehabbed up to shape where it needs to be, employ everyone that is still employed there and not lose any jobs. Keep the quality service that they've been giving for a hundred years to our citizens. And then as we clean things up and get our house in order here locally and let the local people rehab what needs done with the hospital, affiliate with a national name hospital system. They've got some agreements to do that, loose-knit agreements between the brokerage company Delta. But we need to do our part. And the first part of it is we need to acquire the hospital as a community or someone needs to acquire it and then agree to follow the plan to get to that point, which I think will be a rainbow at the end of the, the storm we're going through right now. So we've been asked as commissioners to help and many, many, many phone calls from nurses, from nurses' unions, from doctors, from surgeons, from custodians, from patients, from people that were born there. This is an integral part of our community that we don't want to lose. And as commissioners, as your public servants, I think that we meet here today. We need to be positive and turn over every rock and shake every leaf on the tree. Work with our prosecutor to see what can we do? If it's nothing more than a letter of support or if it's financial, there are avenues that have been recommended to us where they need our support. Right now they need money more than anything to get through the first three months of operating this thing locally until insurance payments kick in. But according to the plan from the professional broker healthcare guy, we can do this. And, and they put a price tag on it, which is between 20 and $30 million. They've already acquired a lion's share of that money and every little bit helps. And I'm here today and called this meeting to see if we have a little bit of a share that we can help with also legally. And I was in talks myself today with the, with the state treasurer. I was in talks with the congressman's office today, Congressman Joyce's office. Yesterday I had talks with Senator Vance's office and Sherrod Brown's office. Well, I was on the phone literally yesterday for 16 hours from, as Eddie and the Marano from 8:00 AM until late into the night last night, fielding phone calls back and forth with the people on, on what could be done to do our part. What is everybody's part and what can we do? We had a great press conference yesterday that had a major show of support from the staff at the hospital where they basically looked the mayor and myself and the community in the eye and said, we have not given up on you. Don't give up on us. We are still providing quality care. We are still saving lives. We want to work here. We want to do our job. Give us the tools. We need to do what we do. Let us be nurses. Let us be surgeons. Let us be doctors. Let us serve the community uninterrupted and let us do what we do best. And that's what we are here to do as public servants to give them the tools or at least give them a chance to be on the field to play the game. And with that, I'll turn it over to another commissioner, Commissioner Cantala Mesa is next with his thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner, and that was very eloquently said. You know, on the way here, as many of you were, we passed Trumbull Memorial Hospital. And I start to think of how indispensable it is to our community. I was born there, my son's born there, my wife was born there. Many of you in this room have been born there too and receive care there. But in regards to this situation, we've unfortunately seen this playbook many times before. Private equity for-profit companies prioritize the wealth of their executives over the livelihoods of the people doing the actual work out there and the communities that they serve. I spoke to quite a few people over the last couple of days. Obviously, the regional chamber, the port authority, members of the group that is pushing this forward in our community. But one really sticks out at me. It was last night. I spoke to a member of the union and the behavioral unit, behavioral health unit at Trumbull. And in talking to him, I got the sense that he was angry, number one, and he was fearful, number two. And he wanted us to do something. He takes care of sick relatives while working 60 hours a week at Trumbull Memorial. It's amazing that he finds time to do that. The ripple effects of something like this are both indispensable and devastating, to say the least, if this were to happen. But you know what that nurse told me yesterday? In all the anger and all the fear that he had of his future, he's worried about his patients. He's worried about the patients of that hospital. What's going to happen to them? We can sit here and go over the direct and indirect effects that this will have, and again devastation on this community. There's something beyond that. There's a literal difference between life and death, between positive health outcomes and negative health, health outcomes. The way I see it, we owe it to this community. Not just because going down to a single hospital, by the way, will raise out-of-pocket costs and will raise premiums across the board for all of us. But because positive health outcomes for our citizens come first, and that's why we're here. Nothing else right now is pressing. Not ARPA funds, not infrastructure projects, because they mean less and less if this doesn't happen. We need to stand ready and take action now. And I just received word this morning, and I hope this facilitates what we're doing here today, and I think it will. Mercer County Commissioners appropriated a million dollars of their funds to save Sharon Regional. And the city of Sharon appropriated, and I'm looking at Bill Danzo because he's our prosecutor, and the city of Sharon, and I know it's in Pennsylvania, appropriated 500,000 to save Sharon Regional. We got to find a legal mechanism to do the same. Thank you.
Commissioner Frenchco.
What I'm gathering is that there's already been discussion between these two commissioners and members of the group. We as a board as a whole don't have anything to verify. I personally have nothing, no business plan, no lease agreement. And though I, I'm more affected than anyone up here because it's in my literal backyard. You can see, you can see Trumbull from my house. We do need to make sure that we are not throwing, first of all, it needs to be lawful. And we already know from previous situations where the board has tried to give money to, for example, Mosquito Lake, that it is impermissible to spend county funds and, and matters like that, even though we have information even about hospitals that are county-run hospitals, that even outlines, speaks to property ownership. And the problem that we've had all along and that the reason for this failure is because of the Medical Properties Trust and the lease not being affordable. So we, I have nothing, and we have nothing to see that, that it wouldn't be a situation where you're throwing good money after bad. We, we, I believe that as stewards of the community, we need to make sure, of the, of the funds, of the taxpayers, we need to make sure that that's not going to happen again, that we have a financial plan, that we see that the lease is not going to be for the same amount. We have absolutely nothing to show. And if you do have something, I think it's important that you share it with the board right now. So if there, if there are people in here who have lease agreements, we need to see that. We are permitted to use ARPA funds for this purpose. But there would also come the consideration of the duration of its use. They're not going to allow us to, our attorneys wouldn't be inclined to allow us to use that money just to prolong the inevitable. So that's a concern. And then we were, I, I heard Malloy talking about Delta Healthcare and a nationally named hospital system. And all of this sounds lovely, but it sounds like the Board of Commissioners is expected to vote on ideas and statements and comments without anything to verify. And I believe that we need to have that if we're going to be moving forward on contributing county resources that we're responsible for overseeing, even if it's not from the county, because we can't use county funds, but we could probably use ARPA. There is another pot of funds that we could consider using as well that no one has brought up. And it's an absolutely eligible use. Arguably, I think that we could, we could do this, but we still at the same time need to see big picture what the plans are, because we don't want to spend money if it's not going to be sustainable. And that would be our opioid funds.
There's a letter in your folder, Commissioner, asking that weeks ago to the prosecutor. You're absolutely wrong, you're misinformed. And if you're going to be a negative Nancy up here, there is the door. We don't need your help. You're going to trash your community for ways not to make this happen.
You may not run meetings this way. That is disrespectful. I have an opportunity to speak uninterrupted.
You can put all the trash out of your mouth you want. We're here to be positive. We're here to make a difference.
To, to follow the agenda and be respectful to women. I know you have a problem with that, but this needs to move forward with, with my opinion as well. I was about to suggest something. Excuse me, is is this the group that has the plan, just out of curiosity, in the back there, Mayor? Do we have a copy of it? Is it possible for us to see?
They're going to speak during discussion time. They'll get their say as you get your say and you realize how misinformed you are. You should have been watching the news. You should have been attending meetings. You should have been coming to things. You would know this stuff.
This is not the purpose of this.
This isn't a let's educate, make you French go meeting today. You should have had that information already. You've already said three or four things that were wrong.
Point of order.
Let's move forward. Finish up, Commissioner, please.
We do have the ability to use our opioid funding. And that's something that I don't think anyone has brought up. That is funds because, because of the, the use, we have, we, and I, I've been spending my time doing all I can as well. I've been talking to people reviewing my emails, reviewing past opinions that are similar, for similar situations. And we have 2, 2.2 million dollars from One Ohio. And, and we also have just shy of a million dollars from the Giant Eagle and CBS settlement. And we, because arguably, if we were to use those funds, and that is where we receive people and we're preventing deaths from overdoses into the emergency room. And then we find sometimes that they have underlying issues, cardiac, other situations, and then they need a bed. I believe that we could argue that the use of those funds could be used, and that's $3 million, providing we still have a plan to make sure that this is a sustainable project. And if we were to do that, then we don't need to tap into the ARPA money and we can still maintain those communities that have, that are on our list for their infrastructure projects. So I'm thinking about a way that we can both address that problem and still not exhaust all of the funds that we have for ARPA.
So if I could say something real quick, I, I think, or go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I can talk back and forth without being rude, so I, go ahead. Yeah.
Just, I, I don't think today's purpose is to look at which fund we're taking it from necessarily. I think today is to look at our commitment to this project and to, and to get some sort of verbal commitment to move forward on the record, that we stand behind this, that, that we recognize the work that's being done by this group and that we want to be a part of it.
And sharing the information with all of the commissioners is important. I mean, if you believe that just because you're speaking to the president of the board, I think you saw just at a, at a glance here that there's, there's no respect or desire to work with me and as a board member to resolve the problems just that we have here. And I just gave a very helpful insight and you should be sharing that with all of us so that we have actually a think tank with people who are capable and have worked in grants and planning and management to make these things that can help make this happen. And it is, it is devastating to our community, not only just, and I think that there's a failure to recognize the, the impact, that it's not just not having the hospital, but there's going to be an impact without having the, the primary care physicians there. And for people who will have to, we don't have public transportation that, that will be able to send people over to another county if they need to change their primary care. The inpatient psychiatry is most, is incredibly important because it just is. There's geriatric psych, there's, it's like, I was just there Sunday before this was announced, dropping off donations. My, my daughter worked there and just left from geriatric psych to go pursue an MSN program. And she called me devastated. The people are concerned about their patients. So it's, it is important. We also don't have Riverbend open right now. So we need to, we need to make sure that there's a continuation of care because these, these are people who have no other place to go. And as far as the, we also have the, I, and I got to say this, I'm disgusted. I, I don't, I'm disgusted with our governor's response. We, we, the other, we could have declared this a state of emergency, look at eminent domain as a possibility. Look at putting a moratorium potentially on foreclosures if it, if it has to do with a, a health emergency that he can declare. These are some other things that should be going on because if, once that's declared, we can have the ability to legis, they could have the ability to legislate other things. Like imagine if there was no possibility of an eviction or a foreclosure and that was, this was going on. You know, we need the governor and their offices to start thinking outside of the box as well. Because I don't believe in his letter where he said that there's another hospital 15 miles away, that that's, that's a viable option at all for the people in our, in our community. So, and I'm disgusted that this is allowed to happen in the United States. And the, the one, I know Elizabeth Warren has been working on it in Boston and everyone has known that this is, this is going on. And there's been, I haven't seen any effort to date to prevent this or change policy at the congressional level to stop this from happening, happening in other places in the United States. And it's going to hurt our population because people are greedy. And I think we need to make sure that legislatively, this cannot happen again. But commissioners can't do that. Congressmen and senators can, and it's disappointing that there's been nothing.
Okay. There have been many discussions that the fund was never, where we get the money? Otter Yoder has already been to a meeting last week with me and some other individuals. And she's been looking at the funding structure that we have within the county. The opiate money did come up and there are lawyers that have settlement agreements with us. The money has to be spent in a specific way. So for you to say, we can use that money, I'm surprised. You must have talked to an attorney who told you differently than what we've read so far. We have talked to the prosecutor's office in Samantha to do the research on that money to see if we can use it, which we don't have the opinion back specifically in regards to that. But everything is on the table here. Lottery money, general fund money. And it's been asked even of our investment money. We got to do something to invest in our community. That's why we're here to talk about how are we going to do this, not what we can't do. And this isn't a possibility. We no sooner had a press conference yesterday that was tear-jerking with the whole staff there. tear jerking with the whole staff there. And you were already on the phone with the media telling them this plan's never gonna work. We don't know what we're talking about. The Business Journal was standing right there and told us that. So we're gonna move forward. The rest of this meeting, positive. We do have some professionals here that do know the answers to the questions that you don't hear. And I would ask during discussion time, if you wanted to like to speak on this issue, if you can educate the board on the issues, things that we don't know, some of the things that came up here. Uh, feel free to come to the podium, address who you are. We want to hear from you, and we want to hear your thoughts and fill in the blanks here. So we have the full picture.
And I do want to say though, that, um, just because a county has funds, doesn't mean that they're permitted to be used for this. And if we were to be eager and say, hey, we want to help, and we're gonna throw general fund or any money that's, that's county money, that's not federal or for a settlement, um, that could result in a taxpayer lawsuit and a finding for recovery that would be um, devastating for our county.
We understand that. That's why we've been talking with Keith Faber, the state auditor, David Yost, the Attorney General. The governor's office, and we have a representative from the congressman's office here right now.
It's a huge rainy day fund too, that the governor is sitting on, and I just don't understand.
He had discussions yesterday about that with Representative Santucci, twice.
That's, that's what, and everyone has seen this happening. So now we're coming to a county that has prevented, has issues with not even having elevators working, and, um, we, the state has all that money there, and they, they need to take action quickly.
Okay, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Tom Connolly. I'm the president of the Nurses Union at Trumbull Hospital. Uh, AFME Local twenty twenty six. And we've been engaged in this for months. And first of all, before I say another thing, I want to thank Commissioner Malloy. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank, um, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm so tired. I can't think straight. Anyways, and several of the gentlemen that were at the meeting, we had several physicians. A lot of our interns and residents came there to discuss a common thing about what we were gonna do here. I don't know that any nuts and bolts per se were discussed there, other than that we had a problem and we needed to figure out how to solve it. And so I can make this real short as far as I'm concerned. I mean, I don't know where you can get money. I don't know what money you can take. I don't know what money is legal. I would seem to me the first thing that we need to do is get steward out of our yard here, because they gum up the works the whole time that they're here. Just by issuing that closure notice, I mean, I had to, we had to hang on to nurses because they were headed for the door, looking for another job. We don't want to lose them and everything. You gentlemen and ladies that had that meeting yesterday did a very, very huge thing to abate that. The mood in the hospital was so different than it was yesterday when I left it. It was, it was desolate, depressed and so forth. And now people are hopeful. Uh, they see some light at the end of the tunnel, and they believe that we've got people in our corners that are gonna try to help us out here. I don't know what you can do. But I do know this though, we need to do something, and it's not like the governor says. People can't just go down the street where they are. They can't do it. The doctors there are working and they need to have some kind of stability, as well as the nurses, the even all the way down to the custodian. Can't do your job when you're worried that you're not gonna have it tomorrow. And so that's what they're worried about right now, and they're worried that the hospital will even be there. Patients stopped calling in. They thought we weren't admitting. They thought we weren't using our emergency room. There was just a big cluster, you know? That approved immediately today after your meeting yesterday. Our census went up, our emergency room is busy, and we're starting to do things now, and we're starting to do surgeries. But now we hear about other letters that are going around, leave, let's put on nurses' cars and so forth, so that they, these headhunters and seekers can steal our nurses from us. And that can't be. Because if a new company comes in there and we don't have the personnel that we have here, it's gonna be doomed. The other thing is, is I don't know about throwing good money after bad. I don't want to see steward make another dime after what, what they've made already. Personally, I think there's a lot of payback coming to that. I think they should spend some time in jail. I don't know what, all they've done, but I'm sure they've done something illegal here, you know? So at any rate, uh, that's not my interest. Our interests are to keep a hospital working so we can continue to serve our patients and the community and to preserve the jobs that we have there, because that means a lot both to the city, to the county, to the state, to the federal government, that people keep working. And that's what we want to do. So I want to say thank you on behalf of everybody. And the, the last thing I want to say is, please don't get bogged down in what we can do and what we can't do. Let's talk about it, and if we can't do it, let's move on. And, and try to decide what we can do. I found out that, um, the, um, the, uh, the click thing there for the United, for the United Way, that has seen some act, activity. I think it might help if it said hospitals on there. And I also think that maybe if they had some kind of a score or a tally going on there, that people might do that. I know that money's coming in from places that we really didn't expect it to. I don't know that they've been finalized. I know that my uh, council late intends to donate to this cause, but we haven't had a board meeting or anything because of the convention. So as soon as they get back, we're gonna talk about what we can do to help as well. So I thank everybody here. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, everybody for everything that they've done, and I hope we continue to do it. Most important thing you can do right now for the nurses and the doctors and even the patients there is to try to keep the community informed that things are going and that we're, we're not gonna close. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I, I was aware though that the, uh, admissions were ending for, um, for psych.
They said, I don't do.
There's no, there's no further admissions. So there are you're still getting admissions there?
Commissioner, there was a, there was a rumor going around that all of our admissions were stopped.
No, no, no. I spoke to a mental health and recovery.
No, no, I know that, but it came from, came from elsewhere, though.
She said that they were still to go to the ER, because then they could be.
But out in the community, they had told even some of the ambulance drivers that we're not taking patients through.
Women still doing the screening, but I didn't know if they were being admitted there or being sent.
Right.
Okay, so they still are doing admissions. Okay.
But I meant all admissions. They were saying that. They were saying, we, we weren't doing surgeries. They were saying that the emergency room was no longer working. All that is not true, you know? And like I said, there's some, somebody hears somebody talking down the hall. Next thing you know, they run down to the other hall and tell them, and it's all around the hospital, and then it's taken as true. So that's why we need information, specifically, I need information to control the rumors there so that we can all keep doing our jobs. And I thank you for the question, ma'am.
Hello. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Victoria Faris, and I'm an attorney. I've been working with the group, um, working on saving the hospital. So I'm here today to, uh, make the request for not only your support and, but also, um, funds to the extent that you have them available, wherever they may come from, to, um, add to the pot of money that will go into purchasing the hospital out of bankruptcy and continuing it and under a nonprofit at a local level. A few comments on, um, what the plan is for the, um, hospital going forward. It'll no longer be uh, for profit, could be purchased out of the bankruptcy by the nonprofit entity. There's, um, through no fault of their own, it's really, the tragedy is that this hospital would have been doing fine. But for Stuart, the for-profit and the lease with MPT, the, 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 the management company there. So there is, um, a viable business path forward. You know, when we eliminate those two, uh, or make those, uh, make the, the for-profit out and make the lease manageable, which is what is being negotiated. And some other creative things, really, everyone's gotten together and rolled up their sleeves and been very positive on, um, bringing in new ideas to make the business run more efficient, such as, you know, using local vendors rather than the vendors that Stuart would have them use, um, focusing on behavioral health, um, doing some different things with the labs. So there's a lot of um, really positive things that would be part of that plan. And the, I think the point's been made, uh, today already, um, quite well by all three of you commissioners, that no one wants to see this hospital close. Uh, seven hundred jobs, over seventy million in salaries. Um, you know, when you look at the city of Warren, um, one point four, at least one point five in income tax revenue to the city. And that doesn't even capture all of the echoes throughout the local economy that, um, that, that, that this hospital, um, impacts. Also, um, you just care of patients, you know, thirty thousand emissions, um, uh, or thirty one thousand, um, patient days and thirty thousand ER visits to this hospital. That, that, those are real numbers and those people need care. And so there'll be an absence of that ability to provide the care, uh, and the same quality that has been delivered, um, by the hospital today. So that's why I'm here making this request of you and respectfully request your consideration, support and funding to the extent that you are able to do so.
Thank you. Question I have for the, the good of the board, um, there has been talks with the landlord, with MPT. There have been talks where they have come to the table to work with this group, uh, whether it be through, um, waiver of rent and, and possibly even umbrella loan from that company. So there are talks to work with the landlord. They want someone in that building. They don't want a big empty building where they have zero income. So they're willing to work with this new group to make that possible, correct?
Correct. Yeah. Some rent is better than, or some lease payments are better than zero, and that's what they'll get if, if this hospital would be liquidated. Um, you know, and I'll speak to, you know, the plan as far as getting funds together. As I said, everyone's been very positive. We spoke with the governor's office, and it's trying to piece together that funding that can be used for this purpose, whether it be a grant from development or, um, perhaps some of the, the Appalachian funds, um, whether it be funds from the city, the county. Um, really, there's been a lot of people that have stepped up, including some, um, some of the stakeholders in the community to guarantee loans and provide other, um, sources of revenue. So putting that all together as a plan, saying here, this is the funds that we have to be able to support the purchase of the hospital, to have that working capital, to be able to make sure that this isn't good money after bad, that we can succeed and get this hospital to a point where it's revenue positive within, um, you know, a reasonable period of time, um, that, that's what we would, the, the lawyers in the bankruptcy would present to the bankruptcy court.
You have the lease agreement, you know, from Medical Properties with Stuart? And do you have the proposals for any, I don't know if it's transferable. Yeah, I don't know anything about it. I'd like to be able to, if we're, if we're spending funds, I want to be able to review things, you know?
Sure. Uh, I do not have the lease with me, but we do have, um, we can, we can follow up with information and answer questions about the specifics of it.
So you have the, did they share the lease that they have currently with Medical Properties Trust and Stuart?
Um, you know, so Delta Health is negotiating that, and I, and I'm sure that they had that, but I, I just don't have it with me, so I can't speak to it.
I think it's important to see what their current lease is. If, if someone can get that, someone from Stuart, you know? And then to compare that to what they're trying to neg, to, to negotiate, because we know that's been the, the problem, you know?
Yeah, I mean, there's no intent to pay the same lease payments. It would just wouldn't work. It wouldn't be viable to be able to go forward like that. So um, certainly we can, we can follow up and answer questions.
You'll be able to forward whatever information you have to the board. See, if you send something to commissioners at, and that comes to all of us, not just one.
Okay.
They did say yesterday in the meeting, this is a moving target, the lease final negotiations haven't been figured out yet. But they are, they have come to the table with Delta and said, we are willing to negotiate with you, and we are willing to rework a new lease. They're not gonna be held under the grounds of the old one. That's a moot point. You mentioned earlier that the hospital is going under because of the lease. Not true at all. When we look at the big pictures of everything of where the profits came out of the hospital, the hospital was very profitable in many aspects. But the money was not reinvested in the infrastructure of the hospital, paying their bills, and anybody's profitable when you don't pay your bills. But it wasn't the landlord's fault they weren't paying the bills. It was the fault of the, the administration nationally of Stuart Health that was taking those profits in funding other hospitals and, and keeping those profits in their pockets. So to say that the landlord was at fault for this is not true. It's not a true statement.
Actually, they, they, that is majorly why that's, that's happened, even in Massachusetts. It's because of, it's because of that. And so we, that's, I'm evidently, it's a problem we wouldn't be looking into.
I, I think, I think what you're, Commissioner, if I may, the decision of Stuart to enter into these leases you know, really put them in a, in a bad position, but there was also other.
There was a conflict of interest. I mean, but, but because of the, the federal law, you're allowed to participate in that, that interest where you're self-dealing in essence, and that's what happened there. So when you've got that personal interest and they're leasing with an entity that they also have an interest in, that's where, that's where, that was a recipe for the disaster. But at the same time, something I heard earlier, and I want a bit more clarification on that, is that there is, uh, mentioning of having a nonprofit then shift over the hospital to a for-profit at some point?
No.
No? It's, it's going to stay a nonprofit, but would be, but would be changed to another nonprofit down the road?
That's the goal, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it would be purchased by a nonprofit, held nonprofit status. Oh, yeah, there's no for-profit that would be entering the picture.
But what, who would that be?
So there's, um, so, I guess this is moving so fast, getting another five oh one C three, um, ready in time, which is not possible. So we used a subsidiary of the residency program, the, um, Western Reserve Education Foundation, um, as that nonprofit, to be able to do this as quickly as we need to.
Okay. That's important to the residency program.
Absolutely.
For the primary care. Whatever you have, I like to see, I like to review and see things. So if I know that I've been left out of the loop and if you.
Well, Commissioner, we couldn't have three commissioners involved in the meetings. That would have been illegal with this. And, and we have to trust the professionals that are dealing with this. I'm not gonna micromanage everything that Delta is doing until this guy will do his job when he's
Point of order.
Of thirty hospitals in his career.
Point of order. Um, a- as I was saying, I, uh, we all, all need to be able, I personally want to be able to review things because, uh, everyone, yes, we have an interest. I have a personal interest on making sure that our hospital remains open, but at the same time, um, you know, trust but verify, verify. And oftentimes our board will just say, hey, that sounds like a good idea. We're just gonna do it.
Commissioner, we have forty eight hours to make this deal.
But my, um, I still would like to see these things. So that's what we should be doing. As duly elected officials, we need to be verifying what we're voting on. So. It's, it's what we get elected to do, so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is just.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, my name is John Gennery. I am currently the chairman of the board of Trumbull Regional Medical Center, and I am also the president of Warren City Hospital, which is the entity that we formed to make an effort to try to save, uh, the hospitals. Uh, so that's my quick background. I'm not gonna repeat a whole lot of maybe what I said over the last day or two, but I, I want to make a number of different points that I don't think really hit the media um, yesterday that are critical.
I actually had an appointment in Cleveland at, at four thirty and wasn't even invited to the press conference. So if you could repeat those things, I would.
It was a public press conference. We did a notification in the paper and everything.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm a, I'm a member of the board that you're asking for something from, and I would like to hear what you, what, what you said, because I wasn't able to. That would be, that would be really helpful.
Okay. Uh, to try and remember exactly what I said, um, simply that uh, this organization has been collaborating for a number of months, trying to bring as many community partners together as we can to form enough uh, momentum and bring enough capital at this point to the table, which is why we're here today, to give us the ability to purchase the hospital and continue the operations. I'm extremely proud of, again, we've got some of the employees here, I believe, extremely proud of the employees, the physicians and the leadership at Trumbull Regional Medical Center. I'm not directly involved at all side. But of those entities for what they've done over the last number of months under unbelievably trying circumstances. I mean, stellar work. It's, it's been awesome. It's, I'm glad to hear that the, the attitude is more upbeat today. I'm, I'm hoping that it is because, because we have a future. Um, so that, that's great to hear, and, and we'll continue to work hard to make this all happen. So, uh, again, what I wanted to try and review again were a few things that really didn't hit the media, as I saw it, that are specific to the hospital. The services that Trumbull Regional Medical Center provides to the community. That the first is the, the emergency department. I mean, thirty thousand visits. Now, I've talked to some people that have been to our competitor across town, that they're busy. Can you imagine what it's gonna be like if Trumbull Regional Medical Center is not there? Talk about access to care and quality care. Not gonna look good. Uh, behavioral health, I think, I'm not sure if everybody totally understands this, but Trumbull Regional Medical Center is the only hospital in the county that has behavioral health beds. Without those, I mean, it, it's, it's a big enough problem. Everybody knows that. It will become. It will become a bigger problem. Again, we're talking about access to quality healthcare that's going to go down. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, Trumbull Regional Medical Center is a level three trauma center, critical to gunshot wounds, any kind of serious occurrences, you know, fatal car crashes, those kind of things. The services that are needed to provide the proper care will disappear. We are also the only chest pain accredited chest pain center in the Mahoning Valley, not Trumbull County, in the Mahoning Valley. And that's an accreditation that comes from the American College of Cardiology as V seven level cardiac chest pain center. If our regional medical center closes up, we no longer have that. And finally, talk about the residency program, which is critical. Twenty some residents in three different specialties, internal medicine, general surgery and primary care. And fortunately, because of that program, we've been able to keep some of those residents here. Everybody knows it's hard to attract physicians to come to our area. That is an unbelievable program that helps continue to have quality care through physicians by having that as part of our local community.
In the CAS lab. If we, if we don't have that.
Commissioner, let him let him up for please and address the chair.
It's and if they, and the proposal to move it over to Mercy doesn't make sense because you you have no surgical backup.
Right.
And people could die immediately if they need surgical backup in thirty seconds. So I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate that. There are just so many services that are provided at Trumbull Regional Medical Center, Medical Center only, that we just cannot lose in the community. I mean, the 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 three outfalls are simply quality care goes down, access to care goes down and costs go up.
That's right.
Everybody is who's okay with that, then we can just.
I I think that part hasn't been talked about as well. Is that premiums and out of pocket costs will definitely go up.
Yes.
For for all of us, because competition drives down those prices.
And also the access, if someone had to go from Trumbull County with a divergent diamond and that that traffic to go to, that that I'm thinking about everything and it's it's concerning.
So so I'm not going to repaint a lot of the things that have been discussed. I will respond specifically, Commissioner Frenchco, to your request about information. It's the right request. Our conversation with the state two to three weeks ago, very clearly, they were looking for some kind of perform a forecast, projections. Delta Health, I believe, should have provided that to the state. I don't have that details with me. I would hope that we could get that as the state asked for it. So we will do our best to try and go to your request.
And and again, right across the line in Pennsylvania, Mercy County Commissioners had had allocated or committed a million dollars towards Sharon Regional. And and Sharon, the city of Sharon, has has committed five hundred thousand. So however they did it, I know it's across the line. I know there's different laws, but however they do it, we need to, we need to can look into that and hopefully mirror it and find a legal methodology to do it. That's all.
Right, they, I I believe they used ARPA money and it is, it 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 is permissible. So it's not like, it's not like the response, you know how with our other non nonprofit requests that we get through ARPA that you have to make sure that they experienced a decrease in funds and an increase in demand for services? It would be an enumerated use, so it would absolutely be able to be used. But I'm still thinking about the the opioids so that we don't leave the people with those other requests hanging, you know?
I mean, at this point, we have to turn over every stone and and every every funding source is an available option.
And according to honestly, I'm not aware of the economics between the two counties, the sizes, et cetera. But my request would be even more than that, if possible.
Well, I would say this, that that we're in it, we're in an economic situation here in Trumbull County where we've been very frugal and and we haven't had any tax increases. And we still have obviously funds that we can use to utilize this if if allowable, so.
The governor has more, so.
And and we're disappointed, we're disappointed in the governor's response also.
Oh, okay. I'm not the only one.
Oh, you're not the only one.
Okay.
We we had some very good engaging conversations with them. We've kind of lost contact to some degree with them, but we're still hoping that the state may stay up.
I really believe that if there was a state of emergency declared that that would give our legislature there the latitude to change some policies that would potentially help if they're, if they could.
Then they have to do that.
Eminent eminent domain. We have, those are things that are outside of our local abilities. Can the city do eminent domain, you know, with the?
At this point, we're talking about eminent domain and saying we're in favor of eminent domain. I don't think it's good for anybody.
Hang on, I believe that that's what happened in Boston, if I'm not mistaken. There is another place in in the country where I believe that they that they did that. So I'm I'm talking from. All right, I'm just saying.
Correct. And we reached out to our attorney general. We have done that. This group has done that. And our attorney general has received letters. He's received personal phone calls from members of this group and our state legislature asking for the same thing. And they gets, we get the answer, they're working on it. And today, even as of today, we're getting support from our state treasurer. Robert Sprague is doing the exact same thing after he had a conversation with me. He had a conversation with the your attorney and and they are doing what they can do. I I believe fully that our state auditor, state treasurer, attorney general and our governor are listening to what we have. And again, we got letters yesterday from Sherrod Brown. We have a letter coming from J D Vance. We have Congressman Joyce's representative here today. I mean, we have the players that are here and between all these brains we have and all these officials we have, we need to turn over every rock and shake every tree. And that's again, what we're doing.
One thing is, is if you have the ability to save the money from the lease and put that back into maintenance, it's been ignored. That's where my brain is, so.
The discussions on the lease have been to have total rent waived for six to twelve months and some percentages for maybe another six to twelve months. That will help provide some cash flow for us also. So that that's been some of the discussion.
I want to see what it originally said and and what they're proposing. I'm just interested that I have a.
I I don't even know if, I I've not seen the original lease. It is called a master lease, which included, I believe, all the facilities at MPT.
Yes, there were, there was North Side and.
I'm not sure if I could learn much by looking at that. I think it's more important to kind of look forward, other than knowing what our lease payments were, which we do know that.
That's what I'm concerned about is because it's still, we used to have the North Side.
Us leave, you want to continue a conversation with everyone in here and tell them all how to do their job?
It would be lovely to be able to talk to to you guys, because I have.
There are no rules of order here. There you address the chair, there are no rules of order. Let's let the people talk. We have more discussions coming.
If I could, simply when when we started this process and John Woods is here, he's he's part of Warren City Hospital also. My my initial two goals was the one to create awareness and two to create a sense of urgency. Everybody's aware and we are at that point of urgency. We we basically have till Monday to get firm capital commitments to allow us to go to the bankruptcy court and give them a plan that they will accept to allow us to save the hospital. Every day that that does not happen, attitudes of the employees go down. We lose employees. We don't want, we don't want to go far down the road. We have thirty days. We don't need to take thirty days. We need to have two days to get this solved. So whatever you could do.
Why did you say two days, two days?
We we need to get to the bankruptcy court as soon as possible to be able to stop this process. That there are going to be objections, we know that. But we need to get to the point where we can have the bankruptcy court say, yes, we have a plan approved, because that changes the whole attitude and the whole process of what we're doing going forward.
Because then my, my question is, would we, if it's if it's next week, would be, would we be able to have the 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 plans or the the proposed lease or?
I I we will contact Delta to see what information we can provide.
If you're hearing it with the state, I would like to.
I just don't know exactly what was provided. That was critical, so. But again, I thank all of you for for your interest, for your support. I'm hoping that you can help support us. It's a team effort. You're not the only ones that can help be the solution to our situation. So we're not looking just to you and we're hoping you can be part of the solution and help us save both these hospitals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next, anyone else like to speak during the discussion section? We 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 do have some ARP money, but it's less than a million dollars right now. I understand that. We're we're going, that's we're going to look at every ass, we're going to look at every aspect we have, including that. And they are asking for much more than that, and I hope we can give much more than that, that. We 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 know that and we do, there is a United Way website. If you go to United Way Trumbull County, they click right on the top of the screen. You could donate money and they've received donations. Since we started this yesterday, donations have been rolling in. And that we know those donations aren't going to solve things. We're asking for the foundations. They are reaching out to the big money people. I know there's a group led by Mr. Peavels that is recruiting and shaking every tree he can to get millions of dollars, not hundreds of dollars from people to make this happen. And we said, if he can get three million dollar commitment from ten different foundations of people, we're there. You know, people have not stepped up that way as of yet. There are people considering it. Well, there are meetings happening right now. They are getting, they are going to the people that have the money, the foundations. And and we're not the only people in the room working on this. There are people outside from their group that are doing that right now, taking meetings today to ask for those millions of dollars. And and that is the commitments they're getting to make this whole package available. So by Monday, they could put a plan in the bankruptcy court and say, stop the proceedings, let us buy the assets and here's our plan going forward and how we're going to be successful. And then they can get a judge to sign off on that. And then we move on to the next phase of business as usual.
Because and because I've.
They've they've asked that. You need to come to the mic if you're going to talk to me, because we need your name for the record to make it legal.
There's been, I haven't been. Before, back in the spring, I met with probably twenty doctors or so at Dr. Nafah's conference room. And I don't remember if anyone in here was there, but there, all of those folks were interested in putting together a solution as well. And I'm assuming and hoping that you've been in contact.
That group is part of this group now. There is only one group now.
Combined, okay. I just wanted to find out, because it included Dr. Logis, Dr. Woods, you know, a bunch of. Okay. Doctor LePaul, okay.
And yesterday there were in excess of twenty or thirty physicians. It's many of them were part of that group, including Dr. Woods that was there yesterday.
I saw him afterwards, but.
Mayor.
Thank you, commissioners, and and thanks to everyone who is here, particularly.
Mayor. What I did. Named unfortunately for the record.
Okay, I forgot. Doug Franklin, mayor of the city of Warren, Ohio. And I want to, first of all, Denny, thank you for calling this emergency session to order and and making sure that you got this before the commissioners, because there is a truly a sense of urgency. If anyone doesn't know by now, the petition for, the filing for the petition for closure of the hospital sort of undermined all of the efforts of these fine people and and the county and the city to try to get out in front of this thing. So a lot of things happened and I will, I will address this to Ms. Ms. Frenchco, Commissioner Frenchco. If if you have any problem with the press conference, we had to throw that together real quick, because we need to send send some messaging out. So my office put that together real quick. We knew about your sunshine rules, so Commissioner Malloy worked with us so that we would be on the right side of the law. But we needed to send a message to those six hundred, seven hundred employees that we were standing lockstep with them in this effort and that both county and city government was together in this and our commitment. So having said that, I want to also thank John and and Vicky for their comments to shed some light on the plan moving forward. But but I want to be brief, brief, because I'm also undertaking the same special counsel session who's in recess right now at four o'clock this afternoon. And my ask is going to be simple. We need to show a fin, a letter of financial commitment so that this whole group, this whole collaboration can show to the bankruptcy judge not only an objection to the petition for closure, but also evidence of financing ability for purchase. So that that's the, that's the immediate task at hand. And and we really were put behind the eight ball because of the speed and the, you know, lack of preparedness for that filing. Nobody saw that coming. I don't think nobody in this room saw that coming. So we had to, we had to act immediately. I I know eight o'clock yesterday morning, we were on a two and a half hour Zoom meeting with with representatives from not only the state, but the local community, the hospitals, specialized consultants, et cetera. So the plan is in place. Unfortunately, it's not, it's 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 a plan that Delta's crafting and fine tuning. So it's not a plan we carry around in our pockets. But I'm going to have the same conversation with with my city council in about hour and a half. But I think they understand the sense of urgency. But I have to convince ten people. Now, what I want is a letter of commitment. We're we're undertaking the same legal questions. What what monies can we use for this endeavor? But my first conversation was was with our our city auditor. And I know your auditor has has been involved in conversations on your level. I I believe Director Colbert had told me that. So we'll be looking at ARP funds, even though we do have projects in the pipeline, so our money is running kind of dead. But we talked at length about those opioid settlement funds. And fortunately, you guys have more than we do. So so we're looking at that as well, including general fund balances. I know state and county government's different, but we're looking at every, as as Commissioner Cantal Mesa said, we're overturning every rock, looking at every account that can be used to save this hospital. That's our responsibility and that's where we're going. So our mission is pretty clear. What I'm here today is to ask for your support, because I'm going to be making the same ask of 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 my colleagues in about an hour and a half. So I really thank you for putting this together. Thanks, I know there's a sense of relief after the press conference. I was amazed that everyone seemed like the whole staff showed up at that press conference. And I I didn't know that many people were coming. But if it, if it gave them a sense of hope and a simple sense of relief, then our mission was accomplished. But for unfortunately, or no, quite pointedly, our work has just begun. We need to show that we have the ability locally, whether that's from local county and city governments and private equity to put together, to finance a package, because the plan is in place and it's a solid plan. But to finance that plan, we need to show the bankruptcy court that we not only object to the to the petition for closure, but we also have a plan that's financed moving forward. Lastly, I will say, since that press conference, I've received several calls almost hourly from across the state and different healthcare providers who are who are reaching out to see you know, how the water is and and how they can play a part in it. So I'll keep you all as much as I can. Obviously, there's NDAs involved with all of this. There's non disclosure group agreements involved with all of these institutions that I just can't blurt their names out. And that's just how it is. And look, I'm not going to blow a deal by being loud mouthed, just not going to do it. So thank you all for listening and and I really, we need your help. There's a lot of people. Not only the dedicated workers, physicians groups, even the administrators have done a great job. And I like to pivot by closing where Denny Malloy, Commissioner Malloy started out. This is by no means the result of the dedication and hard work of these employees and administrators and hospital workers.
Yes.
This is all laying out the foot, foot, feet, excuse me, of Stewart Healthcare. So we have a plan to remove that tumor, if you will, and replace it with a operating, a qualified operator that can take this hospital where they need to be moving forward in the future. Thanks, thanks for your time.
I have a question for you. So you mentioned that there's, there's a plan, a solid plan in place, but we, we don't have that. But you also said that there's an NDA. Does that mean that we're not permitted?
Not necessarily to the plan, but to the to the institutions that have been.
Oh, I understand, okay. Because I was like, please don't say.
And in the, if I can, the plan in the in the short term and in the immediate term, and we knew, do need to act immediately.
Yes.
It's to bridge the gap.
Correct.
Right now, we got to, we got to invest capital. There needs to be capital invested in that facility.
Correct.
To make it ready for something better and something new to get in there. That's the plan. Are we going to sit back and just say, well, the state should do it or private partners should do it? Are we going to actually have skin in the game and 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 pony up something too? Because it's right here in Trumbull County.
Absolutely, I don't have the luxury of waiting on the state to do the right thing. I don't have it. I think they will. We all have processes.
Yeah.
And we're we're all behind the eight. And we're, we're all behind the eight ball because of this untimely notice of filing. But I don't have a luxury. I have a lot at stake. We all, our whole, our whole valley. Has a lot at stake with this issue. So I, all I can look at is what I can do and what, what my responsibility is. I have to put down. My blame thrower because it's out of gas. All I can do is look at what I can do right now. And that, that's exactly where I'm at. Thank you all.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. A lot of the sources that we're talking about, there's a lot of questions about whether there, we can use them or not use them. I'd like to offer a suggestion as to how to resolve this today and come up with something today. So that we can at least move forward and assist. I think that perhaps a conditional letter of support, letter of commitment. Utilizing funds that are legally available. Wording it that way allows us the time, allows Mr. Danzo the time, allows us to question our ARPA council. For what we can use different things for. We have a separate, I want to note too, that the opiate funds have been mentioned. They were mentioned. More than a week ago, when I met with the group at AVI, at that time, I requested a legal opinion from the prosecutor. At that point, we kind of, things kind of started to speed up earlier this week. The suggestion was to deal with, we have separate legal counsel for the opiate, opiate money. So utilize that counsel for the opioid, opiate money. Yes, we do.
No, that's different. The one, the one Ohio isn't governed by, by the opioid council. That's up to the board of commissioners discretion on how to use that.
Not that our legal counsel, we have separate legal counsel for the opioid funds.
And it is not up to the legal discretion or the discretion of the commissioners. We, there is a panel that we have appointed that we'd have to.
One Ohio is completely different. That's a different source of funds. We have legal counsel for the opioid, the opioid fund. It has to be. A part of the abatement strategy and that's.
So there are, there are, there are different settlements as, as Commissioner Malloy mentioned, but that would allow, doing this would allow us that time. To be able to research and figure out what we have. If you have it conditional on what, utilizing whatever we have that's legally available. We have. And I have them grouped in my financial statement here as the national and the county. That's how they're listed in UNIS. The national opioid settlement is 1.2. We did just sign the Kroger stuff. So there's more coming from, on that. The county opioid settlement is 2.2.
2.2, that's the, that's one Ohio, I think.
2.2 million, yes. There is ARPA money. At this point in time, we have pending requests. We have promises to look over, maybe requests. If all the pending requests on the yes sheet and the also the amounts that we have allocated and promised on the promise sheet, but don't have obligated yet. Were fulfilled. We have just slightly less than 800,000. If you would, if that becomes the mechanism, if that part becomes part of what you use. Then it wouldn't be enough, but it would be some. But I, you know, we do have a lot of unanswered, unanswered questions. And I think that perhaps doing it contingent upon whatever is legally available would be the solution and the way to satisfy the group. And give them their assurances that we'll do whatever we can legally permissible. And then also make sure that we follow the law. So we don't have that. Finding of recovery for 1.5. Nobody wants that. I, as your auditor, do not want that. That's my suggestion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I want to, I want to be clear that the board knows that the one Ohio is, is completely different. That had nothing to do with, we don't have an attorney to give us opinions on that. That's.
We have a prosecutor right there.
Commissioner, I was here when we did the settlement. So please.
Wait a second. I, I want to correct your confusion. There's one Ohio, and then there's a giant, Giant Eagle and CBS settled. Out before we proceeded with the other wall, I believe it's Wal, Walmart, Walgreens. So the, the other pot of money is one Ohio. I believe we're district seven, but, and that was an MOU that we had to put together and. It's, it's different. We, we as the board of commissioners makes that decision. We don't have to follow, follow the. Opioid abatement strategy. That's a separate.
That's incorrect.
Okay. And let's hear from our prosecutor who is a lawyer.
Honestly, I, I want to say, if you're, if you're speaking to that, you remember when we did the, the one Ohio and how that's completely different than the, if you can clarify for them, because I think they forgot.
Bill Danzo, Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office. And I first, I recognize the city has a meeting coming up, so I do not want to take a lot of time here. I just wanted to say a few things. First of all, that we understand the importance of this matter. We're ready to do whatever. We can to provide the legal support to the board as you make your decisions. And just to clarify, and we've talked a little bit about it since, but the funds do matter because the, what fund the money comes out of, I should say, does matter. Different funds obviously have different restrictions, different permissible uses. So that's a discussion that we can have hopefully here in the very near future to figure out. What's, what's on the board's radar as far as those kind of expenditures and what funds might be available. The opioid money, there are some different pools of money. My understanding though, is that the opioid council we have hired has been sort of. Working through those issues with the county on a global scale as far as different settlements and different pools of money. So we can certainly, I think, still reach out to them. They are by far the experts in that litigation and the permissible uses of that money. The one Ohio does have a board that was set up, an advisory board. But again, I don't think that precludes us from reaching out to the attorneys who are truly the experts.
They're not retained for that. They're retained for the other matter and.
Well, we can verify all that as we move forward. Again, this is very, this is all very fast developing and we're going to try to do the best we can to sort through all those things.
I think it's better to get to contact the, the. Committee that's together with April Caraway and Piccarelli.
Well, and again, we can do, we can do all that as we move forward here. That, that's not an issue as far as I'm concerned, working with all of them. As far as the ARPA funds go, obviously, you know, I'm willing to help communicate anything to Attorney Rogers that we need. She's by far the expert on the ARPA funds here. She knows what we've already been through in our county, not just on our county, but other subdivisions as well. So I think that, that leaning on her expertise is, is important. I would say just, you know, obviously as Commissioner Cantala Mesa pointed out, Pennsylvania may be doing some things. I, I don't know exactly how they're doing them. But their laws are a little bit different. So we do have to be just cautious again on, on how we do this. I do not want to see the board get into a situation where. You're accused of any mis, misexpenditures down the road. And I know you guys don't either. Again, just something we need to work through and be on the same page. You know, and again, I, I would also be willing if the board, you know, needs any support on it to help reach out to some of the folks at the state level. You know, I know Attorney General Yoast comes from county government. He's faced issues. I'm not saying this kind of issue, but he has faced issues on a local level. And he's been very responsive to us over the years as far as opinion request and things. So I think anything that we could, we could lean on to maybe expedite something. I'd be certainly willing to reach out to him and his staff to, to help with that. And I, I suspect they'd be willing to, to help the best of their ability. And after all, you know, that's something that, that we all know the state has the deep pockets, deeper than Trumbull counties at least. And I think that it's important to try to keep leaning on them as well to see what they can do to help in these situations. And anything that, that we can do in our office to help out with that, we'd be glad to do so.
Thank you.
I ask you a real quick question. When they filed the, the. They filed the objection to the closure. They have so many days to buy.
Wait. I was going to say. This is a board meeting and we're addressing the board and, and he represents us, so he can't speak to anything.
You're supposed to address the chair too. Would you have not done the whole meeting?
Say, just to be clear on that, I, we have not been involved in the bankruptcy proceedings. I, I really can't speak to that. I haven't been involved in that.
Okay. With hearing this stuff here, I'd like to make a motion from the chair. First, I'd like to make a motion that we, we mirror the city of Warren and writing a letter of objection for petition of closing to the bankruptcy court. And signed by, on behalf of our board of commissioners, as I know that Senator Sherrod Brown has done, as Senator Vance is doing. As we hope Representative Joyce will do. And we follow that letter of closure. I'd also. Asked that the Mahoney County Commissioners do the same thing, being there are two facilities in Mahoney County and Austintown Township trustees. As well as the other entities where we have Howland Township potentially where Hillside is and. There's even a facility in Hubbard that has not been addressed that is part of Sharon Regional. We want to make sure those employees are taken care of.
And, and it is constitutionality. You have to make your motion without discussion because you just please write your consci, sice motion. For us to second, and then you can engage in the discussion.
I made a, I made a motion and we have a letter of objection for petition of closure. To the bankruptcy court in regards to Stuart Health.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make another motion also from the chair. That we write a conditional letter of commitment utilizing funds up to $3 million. In support of saving our hospital or employees. And, and throwing support behind the nonprofit group interested in acquiring the hospital.
House. Are we?
And I'm stating it. So if I get a second, I'll discuss it.
Second.
Yeah. Discussion. We don't know, there, there may be as many as, if we, if they say we can use opioid money, we've got money there. There may be other monies that we come across over the next couple of days. That's up to us. That's why I said up to. And if it's only 1.5, if it's one, we can discuss that at that time. I'm saying up to that amount. We will have the discussion with our prosecutor. We'll have the discussion with their, any other attorneys we need to regarding the opioid money. But I don't want to hamstring us by saying a certain amount, less than that. I want to give us a little buffer, which is what was asked of the committee. And if we go less than that, they will understand that. But I want to set something where we can see what we have. So we're not. Falling short and have to come and make another motion at another time.
You see, ARPA would be eligible. The opioid is, I think is important that you, that if you're going to make the, my concern is not see, voting on something for a plan that I don't have yet. Like no one has had the courtesy or decency to address me or to send anything, you know, to the board because you're allowed, even though there are sunshine law by. Concerns where you're only speaking to one and not the other three, it is perfectly lawful to share information with all three of us. And I have not received.
We've discussed it at a public workshop, so you did not attend.
Again, discussion is different from receiving information and I haven't received any information. I want to be helpful and, and, and let you know that I, I definitely support it. You, you are eligible under ARPA for. And I think that the commissioner should amend the motion to make sure that it's very clear that it doesn't exceed a certain amount. In the ARPA as not to leave those other applicants and pending requests high and dry, who are, are waiting on that. But at the end of the day, I, I, I believe we're voting to commit something without having that. And I would prefer. To come back tomorrow or Monday after being able to at least review something. That's where I stand with this. And I would like to be able to, to see, you know, I'm hearing people saying that there's a, there's a plan in place. I'm sorry, there's a, a plan in, in place, but I haven't seen anything. And that's, that's the, that's the only, that's a major concern. That I have is making sure that we see what we're doing because I don't object to, to that amount because I believe that it's, it's covered. Probably 500,000 or 750, 750 with the ARPA and then the other amount coming from the opioid. But at the same time. I believe we should see what we're committing it to.
Well, it is conditional as, as my, as my motion is. So the conditional, we will have to finalize that and we could do that at that time with what the amount is.
It will be conditional with the amount, but it's not, it's not conditional upon us reviewing. The, the plan or the purpose of what we're actually voting on. And I don't have a, a problem with what you're saying. All of it sounds wonderful and like people, and, and people have been doing some very hard work. It sounds like in our community to put this together, but to come and ask. For 300 or I'm sorry, $3 million, which I support without providing us what the plan is, is a little concerning for me.
Well, you will have time to review the plan all you want, all over the weekend. These people have a deadline. Delta is given a 48 hour deadline to submit this to bankruptcy court. And I heard Mr. Canary said Monday, but as of, as of.
Saying, that's the whole problem I'm having with all of this is people are saying, saying, saying. And it's not like I don't trust people, but without seeing actually what's going on. There's, there's a concern to commit money without actually knowing anything. I hear you say this and you say this and you say this, and all of it sounds like a great plan, but I have not seen anything.
Okay. But I'm asking you to commit your help up to a certain amount.
If we truly have 48 hours to do this, why can't we have 24 hours to review what the attorney said she can try to get to us so that we can see what we're committing. It to.
Mr. There are, there are stakeholders in the room and outside of the room that are beating the bushes and using funds of their own. And by the way, I had a phone call with it, with an individual that's on that group yesterday. And before everybody hymns and haws and says anything, this is one of the pillars of our community that will remain nameless. But it's either, are you in or are you out? Are you going to help be a part of the problem? Or are you going to be a part of the solution?
Right.
And at this point, and at this point, we have legal minds, we have medical minds, we have business minds that make up the best and the brightest of this, of this community. And if we can't trust that we're putting, that we're going at this with them, with the city of Warren, with the state, what are we doing here?
Right. We need to lead by example in this. And by this gesture, I'm saying hopefully we'll make the Ween Foundation, the Youngstown Foundation, Trumbull Memorial Foundation follow suit that. The commissioners are putting their money where their mouth, our mouth is. We need to do the same. That's the amount that we're going for. Let's flush them out. And it's, it's time. It's time to act. The, the, the posers need to get out of the way and make a chance for, for the people. They're going to have a solution.
Talking about making a contingent upon eligibility for the use of the funds, but there's.
Then I'll change my motion. Then I'll retract my motion. Then I'll retract my motion, but it'll appease you for the moment here. We have other orders of business. Did I, did I make a motion that we submit a conditional letter of commitment? Of funds and support up to $3 million and a contingency to be upon. Finalizing where we can take the funds from and review of the plan going forward.
I'll second.
Review and approval subsequent.
We're going to vote on it. We're going to vote on that when that happens.
Amend that to say.
I review and approval. We'll add the approval. Is that okay?
I'll second.
Commissioner, if I could just very quickly, Bill Danzo from the prosecutors again. The one thing that I think Auditor Yoder mentioned was that the way maybe you could think about wording it was. About funds lawfully available for this purpose.
Correct.
And I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was what you guys were still thinking. That's all.
Of course.
I, I, I agree with you, but I want to. Is lawfully listed there? As the prosecutor just suggested? Would you?
All right, let's, let's do. Write this down, Lisa, please.
That's what the clerk said.
Make a motion that we. Have a conditional letter of support to, to lawfully utilize funds. Up to $3 million.
Use.
And also agreeable upon.
Be. Utilize lawfully. Available funds.
To utilize lawfully available funds up to $3 million. Contingent upon review of the plan and a vote of the majority of the body, board of commissioners. Okay. We'll do it that way. Semantics, but we, the point is clear that we are going to support this thing and we want to support this thing.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Call the vote?
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Thank you, both of you. Okay. Closing statements with this, I just want to say one more time, what we are saving here and what we are selling here, the bill of goods that. The bill of goods that is being put forward are the assets that we have, and it's not the building. It's the staff. It's the hardworking people that go to work every single day there. Those are people that we care about. We as a community care about. We, we appreciate what you do. We appreciate what you've done. We appreciate the tradition you've had. I, I also want to say at this time publicly, that I ask, I ask as a commissioner, I ask as a community member, I ask as a human. For mercy to back off while we do this process. I know they've shown support. I know they have said, we, we hope for the best for the employees. We hope for the best. But putting flyers on employees' cars, and while we were having a press conference yesterday and how we're gonna save this. They had a representative on Channel 21 News that was talking about a job fair and how they're gonna absorb all the people after this bankruptcy. So I would ask mercy and the officials of mercy, thank you for what you do, mercy. We needed to, we would be fighting for you if this was, positions were reversed. At this time, please back off and let the, let these people do what they need to do. Don't put pressure on our community. Don't be a circling vulture waiting to pick up the carcass of, of Trumbull at this point. Work with us on this stuff and we'll flourish as a community together and not apart from that. Any other comments or my colleagues?
I, I want to say I'm thankful that you were, that you agreed to make the language, because I absolutely support what's going on. I absolutely want to be in the loop and I absolutely want to do everything I can to help. I literally live a. Two minute walk from the hospital. My daughter worked there until last summer. My cousin works there and is terrified about where he's gonna go and find. Employment. He's been there since after, after high school. My friends work there. And again, I was there, there Sunday and I'm intimately concerned about the well-being of the people in our, in our community. And the fact, I have been. Devastated thinking about the impact that it would have on our community. I want to say especially mental health. There, there's geriatric psych where there are people with dementia and other mental health issues. And, you know, their family member who can barely drive to come and visit them. Imagine if they had to go to Heartland. You know, this is, this is something that we need to do and move forward on. And I just hope that. We can light a fire under the rear ends of our, of our other officials. Like Mike Dwyane, like our, our senators who are campaigning right now. So how about campaigning for our hospital? Like take a little pause off of that campaign trail and make sure that we can do something for us right here. So.
Agreed. And, and just to echo some of those sentiments, and I don't want, I swear I wasn't gonna get political, but at the same time. Corporate greed and what is happening in this country needs to be looked at at a level that it's not being looked at. And unfortunately, we're having to bear the brunt of that. You have executives with golden parachutes making. Millions upon millions of dollars getting new boats and yachts.
Yacht.
And, and people in this community, they don't live here and people in this community are bearing the brunt of all that. And I'm tired of it. I hope there's a way that we can solve this larger issue. We're gonna do what we can at the local level, but at the, at the federal level. It's, it's, it's happened so many times. We've seen it in the steel mills. We've seen it in General Motors. We've seen it in. And some of you have, have been a part of those closings unfortunately and have been affected by them. And it just, it infuriates me to no end that, that this is allowed to go on and this, what I think is criminality is looked over. So.
We gotta change the laws. I'm sorry, I agree with you. But the fact that they can do this and it's not criminal and it's actually lawful for them to. Hurt communities by, with their own greed, needs to be changed at a national level. And I'm thankful for senators that are working hard in Massachusetts. And I really want to see a faster concerted effort to change this because it's not gonna be us only. It could be other communities next with the same thing happening. They're doing it everywhere.
Okay, with that too, I would like to. Let everyone know four o'clock in the council chambers, the city of Warren is gonna do the same thing. Mayor, I will be there to support. I would hope my colleagues will be there to support you. I want to thank all of our other elected officials that are sitting out there that support the people at the hospital. Thank you for attending today and showing your support. I know. Each of you have reached out in one way or another, asking us to do what we can and offering your support. I thank you for that. I thank you to the unions for being involved. We are pure partnership. This is a grassroots effort of some of our brightest and best. And when we come together, anything is possible. And I believe with this is possible. And we need to trust the process. Employees, again, we got your back. Stay, hold steady. Don't take the temptation to move out of state. Stay in your ground the best we can. We're all gonna, we're gonna stand or fall together. And if we fall together in the end, we're gonna be there to pick up the pieces with you. So with that said, mayor, we'll see you in council chambers. United Way, if you want to help in any way, shape or form, in any way, Trumbull County, click Save Our Hospital. Click on the button and you can make your donation.
I have a, a que- I have a concern about that United Way thing. Someone already asked me today, what if it doesn't, what if it's not successful? Are they gonna use the money for something else? So I think that we need to clarify that with the United Way.
Well, they are acting kind of as the fiscal engine for the nonprofit. So.
Hard day, okay.
I would say if things go in a bad direction, that could be utilized to help the workers there, help do something that's still gonna help the people. I would ask that. Okay, we'll see you at the mayor's chambers at four. And also as a board, I would ask, please, I don't know if we need to send a letter, an email to Prosecutor Watkins. But I would ask that the prosecutor's office make this their number one most serious concern right now. To help us find the legality of what we can do over the next, although it's a weekend coming up. If, if Prosecutor Watkins can please employ his staff to help us through the weekend. I'll be working through the weekend. I believe both these commissioners will and every one of you. That are near and dear to this. We're not gonna put this off till Monday morning.
We've already, in essence, I know that we, we need the majority of the board to make requests, but because we just made. A formal motion saying that, that it's contingent upon being lawful. I'm, I want to just be clear that that is a request from the board of commissioners to check into that. Okay? So there's no confusion.
We can't tell another elected official what to do, but we can ask.
And no, there's no problem. Like I said, we'll help in any way we can. But I, I just want to be clear too, though, that if we're talking about ARPA funding and opioid funding, at least in the first instance. Those also are gonna go to separately, separate legal counsel. Again, I have no problem helping and, and we're willing to do it. I just.
Any, any and all help you can, you can, there may be funds we don't know, but I know Martha Yoder's been working hard for two weeks now helping to fund this.
I just want to make sure that if, if, an attorney, the Ohio one, and Tanya, who I actually spoke to, and it is permissible.
But we will need, we will need guidance from the board as we move along, because it, we don't make decisions about how much to spend, where to pull it from, any of those things. So we will need the board's input as we move along.
We want to reconvene Monday. If they are gonna submit something on Monday, do we want to reconvene Monday afternoon?
That is fine. I'm, I'll be available.
Wait, who's submitting something? They're gonna, he's.
Delta, but with the, through the local people, we have more answers through the weekend. Or do we want to wait till Tuesday workshop to discuss? Any contingencies we found or anything, any monies or legality we may have found?
I was gonna say, if we wait until Wednesday to have it as the first agenda item, would that be okay?
I think that'll be too late.
To get us information?
I, I would say, let's, I'd make a motion, we have a.
No, 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 we can't do that. The, the sunshine laws prevent us from actually, this is an open meeting for a special meeting. Special meetings are a specific purpose. So we can't have motions to have subsequent meetings from this meeting. But if someone, if someone on our board after the fact wants to call. A special or an emergency meeting, that's allowable and that will probably happen.
We can't call a special meeting from a special meeting?
No, no, sir. I understand.
Mr. Prosecutor, do you have any input on calling a special meeting?
Make sure that we've, let me just explain something. If the board of commissioners does something to cause a meeting to happen that was not lawfully made. Then everything that happens in that meeting could be rescinded. So I'm trying to make sure that this happens with a, with a proper procedure. Okay? Right, okay, so.
I was present on the board. I'll, I'll monitor what's going on with the, the thing and then I'll make a decision on whether. We call a special meeting on Monday or whether I do that or not. And it can always be rescinded.
Or it could be Tuesday afternoon or something, yeah.
We do have a public meeting here Tuesday at 10:30 in this room, a, a workshop, and then we have a public meeting on Wednesday. It's already pre-scheduled.
Okay, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.